Okay, I'm letting you in. Okay, Kim, can you hear me? Kim, give me a yes or no. Can you hear me? Like thumbs up? Thank you. I'm running the video on a separate screen, but I'm running the audio through mine. So, okay. What's that? Okay. Alright, I'm gonna admit. Yes. I will let you know, I do not have them yet. No. Not yet. So far. The second slide is your Zoom norms. I just added it right in there so you can speak to it. No. Nineteen, but like four of them are us, so fifteen.
And this name is Ginny and Erin, but we are still on form.
Oh, Ginny is logging in now. Yeah, I think we're good. Brian.
Start quickly with a quick set of rules for the Zoom room and also for anybody in public here. Meet your microphone upon entry to the Zoom room. You may unmute yourself when the moderator has called on you during the public comments portion of the meeting. And identify yourself using your first and last name. You'll be asked to leave if you are not identified in the meeting room. If you have questions during the public comments, please type your question into the Zoom chat or indicate in the Zoom chat that you would like to speak. Depending on the number of attendees in the meeting, it may take the moderator some time to get all the questions. Please be patient. Be respectful at all times. Zoom room is being shown on the screen in the in-person meeting room in real time. Please do not put anything in the chat that you do not wish for everyone to see. This includes private messages to other members sent via the chat feature in Zoom. And all meetings are recorded. For everybody in attendance here, any public comments that come up, I'm just gonna ask you to come up to the microphone here and speak and just start by introducing yourself with your name and then go from there. Okay, we're gonna start tonight with the presentation of the updated draft reopening plan.
Okay, so the steering committee has spent a great deal of time together since the last meeting on Thursday. And we did make some revisions to our plan based on some of your recommendations. The committee recommends beginning on a hybrid two model, which was formerly labeled our yellow model. I'm gonna speak to that a little bit more in the coming slides. We thought it was important to sort of go hybrid one, hybrid two because there was some misinterpretation in what green and yellow represented. So, class sizes are changing almost daily as new students enroll in families weigh their options. I can't say this enough, our numbers right now are all over the place. So, one of the reasons that we are recommending going to this hybrid two model is that we really need some time to sort of phase in and see what our numbers actually look like. My understanding is there's a number of families that are waiting to hear about our plan and making decisions as we speak. So, I think we need some time to really settle in to the school year and see what our numbers really look like so we can make the best decisions for our students and our staff. Social distancing and safety requirements, you know, are very important to us. We have to adhere to them with the requirement made by main DOE. It, you know, this six foot versus three feet is coming up a lot. I'll speak to that in just a minute. But really what the six feet does for us is it allows us to feed our children. That's a real sticking point for us. There's no other way for us to feed our kids. If we were to try to feed them in the gym right now, I mean, in the cafeteria, it would take us, it would require seven to eight lunch periods. It would take us virtually all day to feed our kids. We don't feel like that is educationally what's appropriate for our kids. We want our kids to come in here so that we can teach. So, I also think the three feet versus the six feet, if we, again, considered the three feet, that would be no mask breaks in the classroom, no eating in the classroom. I think it would really raise, and I think what you're seeing around the country right now is for those districts that have gone three feet in the classrooms, some real concerns with staff. This is new to all of us. And we're all gonna be coming in this with the best hopes and best outcomes. And so, really phasing in slowly and getting on the other side of Labor Day, to the end of Labor Day, I mean, to the end of September, we feel is what's best for our students and our staff. Also, as I spoke to the other night, if there were a case at the three foot distancing, you know, in the classroom, and we had a case in the classroom, our quarantine numbers are gonna be much higher. So, or potentially could be much higher. And Lindsay spoke to that the other night, and if we need, she could speak to that more in depth again tonight. But, you know, it just, it's really what we feel is best for our kids. Given the feedback that the board gave us on Thursday night, we changed our remote learning day from Friday to Wednesday. And we did get some feedback from the community about the early release day and decided to make our Wednesday, which is our remote day, our early release day as well. So, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday will be 2:30 dismissal. Some of you have asked, why are we doing this? We're doing this because teachers are gonna need some additional planning time. They're teaching two platforms, which is something new to them, and it's gonna be challenging for them. And they need time to be able to plan to do this. It will also allow us to do some professional development on that day. And it will provide some time for custodial staff to do some deep cleaning in the classrooms. Jeff is gonna speak to what that will look like in a little bit. I just wanna mention there have been some questions about foster tech. Foster tech students will have individualized schedules. Other concerns addressed in revisions, as I said to start, the green, yellow, and the red plans were a little confusing, I think, for people. Because the state has designated our county as green, really what that means is that we continue to show low numbers. Doesn't really have anything to do, or it has very little to do with how we come in or how we decide to come in. So, we went with a hybrid one, which now represents what was formerly our green, and a hybrid two, which was formerly our yellow plan. So, we'll be calling those hybrid one and hybrid two. A true return to normal pre-March 2020 would require restrictions to be lifted at the state level. So, measured, we've gone through, measured, and identified capacity for every classroom and for the bus, and what our current enrollment numbers are, and what they could potentially be, and if you'd like me to talk a little bit more about that later, I'm happy to do that. Let's see, so you all was really looking for a date as to when we could potentially look at going hybrid one. And we're gonna sort of, we're gonna follow the state's, state's dates when they go in and reassess the county levels. So, for us, we'll go in and reassess again as well. So, our next reassessment date will be September 25th. And at that time, plans could change at any time as needed. Why is hybrid one not feasible at this time? I spoke a little bit about it. The state would lessen, would need to lessen safety requirements. We feel that it's just not appropriate at this point in time to entertain anything less than six feet. We need six feet distancing for eating mask breaks and safety. Specials creates an additional challenge beyond regular classroom spacing. As the specialist classes are much smaller than the regular classrooms. And logistics of moving class spaces and splitting classes is not recommended by the state. It's not recommended for us to, to sort of change cohorts. And what I mean by that is, for example, the middle school science and the high school science rooms, if they were to switch classrooms to make the numbers work, we would be infringing on the cohorts that we're trying to keep separating right now. So, that's not really where we wanna go. Um, this increases exposure and goes against state cohort guidelines. Why is three feet social distancing inadvisable? Again, I spoke a little while ago, it would raise the numbers of students that potentially, and staff that would potentially have to be quarantined. It doesn't allow for eating or mask breaks in the classroom. Staff and student safety and health concerns, increased exposure risks, and students will struggle to maintain six feet at three feet. They will end up leaning towards each other and end up too loose. So, basically, it goes back to the old saying, twelve gets us eight, six will get us three. So, we're trying to keep it at the six foot level so that we can maintain three feet exposure with our students at the very least. And that's all I got.
I'll just add that for the spacing, Jeff and I spent two hours probably the other morning. We went out to every single classroom with pieces of tape, counted tiles, put pieces of tape on the floor, looked at it, moved them around. We feel like we have, you know, accurate numbers. We did the six feet. And George is right, you know, dust are six feet apart. You sit in them. Once you like move at all, like lean over, it really is like three to four feet, you know, but they can sit up straight and have six feet. So, we did a pretty thorough job. It was, we were done with putting tape on the floor by the time we got there. So, we have, we feel our numbers are very accurate for our spaces.
Okay, thanks, George and Seth. Real quick before we go further, the draft reopening plan that I sent the school board this morning, there's a change to that. On page seven at the top, the title's Ranger Lakes Regional School Learning Models. There's a new opening paragraph there. I'll read it. "On August 19th, 2020, the steering committee recommended to the RSU 78 Board of Education that we begin the school year with the hybrid two model. On September 25th, 2020, the administration, along with the steering committee, will reassess based on current MDOE and CDC recommendations and guidelines." Then the next paragraph in the middle, there is a change in there as well. It now says, "Please note, even in the event Franklin County receives a green designation, it may still be necessary to open with a hybrid two model." All right, that's all the changes. We can kind of get into the meat of this. Can I get a motion to consider the 2020-2021 school year opening plan? Kathy, second? Erin, okay? Let's open it up. Your questions, comments?
Paul Reynolds, board member. First of all, I do support opening hybrid two. I do think though, that we should have a date to go to hybrid one at the end of September. And that the administration and the staff should be able to prove that any changes the state made, or anything we've learned, can change that. So, in other words, I think it should be the other way around, excuse me, that we should have a state certain that we're gonna go to hybrid one. And if things change, we should be convinced that we can't go to hybrid one. Along with that, I appreciate the numbers that you gave us for capacity and for what you've got for enrollment right now. But what we don't have is how many kids would actually be at three feet if we filled the classroom? In other words, is it 10% of the kids? Is it 90% of the kids? Is it 50% of the kids? I think that's really important because we shouldn't be holding back the majority of the school for a few classes that can't be at six feet. And I don't know whether that's true or not, because I haven't gotten the numbers. And the last thing I'd like to say is, last year, we put in the budget for psychotherapists. Reason we did that was that the administration is very concerned about the well-being of the students. about the wellbeing of the students. And specifically, social media. When these kids aren't in school, what do you think they're doing? So if that was a real concern, that is a bigger risk than COVID. As far as I know, I might be wrong, we don't have a case in this town. And this could go on for a couple of years. What's going to happen to our kids? It's going to be worse than the cure. So we got to get our kids back.
Thanks Paul. Anyone else?
Chris Homer. I'd like to speak in general that the way I look at this situation is that we're in, for lack of a better word, a crisis. In the sense, regardless of your politics or how things were created or whether you believe in what's going on or not. It has created a crisis both on government, business and schools. Since March, I've been working with businesses on one-to-one basis, reviewing guidelines, helping them figure out how to weather through it. Working and being with other essential employees. Some of us doing seven days a week, long hours, those pieces. I had a lot of concerns as we went through this part. I was nervous as hell, Memorial Day weekend. See where things were at. Some of you know, I, for several months, I charted everything that was happening and still have a spreadsheet that I do that on of cases and those pieces to kind of see where it is. I like to make decisions based on data. And I think today we've got some more data points. I think what my colleague, Mr. Reynolds requested is additional data points I think we need. I also understand the other piece to this is if you look at the state guidelines, it says to go from the yellow and the green, meaning that we are green in Franklin, that we are able to go full operations if we can meet the needs of our students safely with facilities, transportation and staff. I think we got part of the facilities numbers. I think we have a pretty good handle on the transportation from what Jeff has presented. But I haven't seen a lot in relation to staff. And I understand we've been told very well, and I, I'm not knocking any work that's been done by the administration. I think they've done a good job. This is all new. I've personally had experience working with various crisis management things and very different type of project things, which is a lot different than I think. And developed some skills over time with these type of things. That there's some things philosophically, I think, that need to be integrated into this plan that aren't there. One is, to me, my number one concern is education of the children in this town. I'm not worried outside. My fiduciary duty as a board member is to listen to the citizens of our community, their concerns, work with other board members, the administration and staff to find a solution and make sure that our children are getting educated. There are community members that can quite easily, their children, they have the financial resources, good internet, availability of tutors, flexible work schedules. They can check all three boxes and meet the needs of their students. But we have several families that attend this school. Or maybe you'll check two of those boxes, or one of those boxes, or none of those boxes. And I feel like a lot with this plan, it's all or nothing. And I think some of the stuff brought up about, are there certain classes where we can fit more of them in? Is it going to be easy? No. Is there ways that we can work in different pods with teachers and pods where we don't confine ourselves necessarily to grades or divisions of those pieces? This community until 1940, 1950, like every main community, had a one-room schoolhouse. You had kindergarteners with 12th graders. The teachers that had to work in there, I'm sure it was very difficult, but they found a way to deliver stuff on multiple levels. We have an incredible community to work in. We have incredible facilities. And personally for me, September is one of my favorite months of weather in this town. We don't have all the answers. Things are constantly changing on the government level, the business level, everything every day. I believe that for this community, that we should set a specific date. I believe September 28th to set that we're going to go for in-class instruction. Now, if the staff, the administration bring back facts and figures and determinations that can help us evaluate, that we are not ready for that. Then I'll be the first one to vote, let's bump it a week or two weeks or something like that. But I feel, I've worked enough on projects and worked enough in crisis things. They call this slippage. And I could see us being, talking about maybe going green in December or something like that as things go along. Now, I apologize that I'm long-winded. Those of you know me, that's how I am. But I really wanted to take a moment to cover a couple more things. One is, whether it's controversial or not, I've heard through some of my resources, MPA is probably going to rule that there's no fall sports. I think it's our best interest for our community is, we say, you know what? We want to get every, every student back in school getting educated. Let's cancel the fall sports schedule. Let's not expose our children to other communities. I also feel, and I know this might sound challenging too, is that the high school students that attend Foster Tech should continue to do remote learning the other days that they're not at Foster Tech. Rather than taking the risk of what happens at that school. Because remember, with everything, whether you believe in the virus or not, you are exposed by the least responsible person in the group you are in. So you've got three school districts that go into one district to have that there. So the potential for exposure is at peace. I also know that we can't tell other parents what to do or other things, but we can limit the exposure for students. And I believe that we should have some kind of a policy in there, which maybe just clarifies, which probably already exists at the state level, that if a family in this community who has school-aged children travel outside to one of the states outside this area, that they either need to do a negative test or they need the quarantine for the two weeks before they bring their kid back into school. Again, trying to protect what we already have. I feel if we do some of that stuff, we can do it. I feel that there are kids out there that will get so far behind working this thing. We've got parents out there that are single parents. They have, they don't have a flexible employee over these pieces. They're trying to get by. And the more kids that we can put into this educational institution and safely can be accomplished. Now, I understand there are staff members that are probably terrified to come back. There are staff members that are ready to go, and there's some that are in between. And I know it's going to be tough figuring out the staff part. But I think you need to figure that out sooner than later. And I have no problem if any staff member says, you know what? I'm not comfortable. There's already positions put in place in every other business that's out there that you can either, you know, you can use on sick days or you can do whatever you need to do in order to feel protected. If there's a way that that teacher, based on what they can do and with that text, can still perform and do all of their job, but work from the confines of their home. I'm not opposed to that. If the administration feels that the education quality can be accomplished in the children in the classroom. But I think our goal as a board should be, is to provide the best education to the most amount of students in the safest manner possible. And to me, we need to get as many of these children able to sit in their seats here and do that. I've heard reports, some kids didn't even check in during that time, from the end of March to the end of there. And it wasn't the kids that wanted to learn, it's the kids that really need to learn, but maybe don't have that extra support that they need outside. For a lot, some kids come into schools, the rest of it from some of the other craziness that they're given. And to me, I feel our duty should be is to get as many in here as possible. Thank you for your time.
I guess I'll make a quick comment here, just in talking with the administration. I'm not trying to imply somebody's saying otherwise, but I think it's the administration's position that they want to get as many students into this school as possible as soon as they can. Now, there's a difference between Paul and Chris, what you're saying about make it a, we're going hybrid one to deviate from on a certain date. There's, that's certainly a different position. But I, I don't think anybody is trying to keep kids out of the school. I think the easiest answer right now would be everybody just goes remote. For the school, that would be the easiest answer. That's by no means what I think anybody is trying to do. I think, unless I'm wrong, somebody raise your hand. I think everybody here knows that the kids need to get back in school as long as it can be done safely. Real quick, Paul and Chris, just so I understand, you are both okay with starting in a hybrid two model? Is that correct? Okay. The difference obviously is, how do we go to hybrid one? Do we have a hard date to go to hybrid one that then we need to prove we can't do it? Or do we have a date where we just reassess? That's the difference that I'm hearing right now, that we'll obviously need to come to some kind of agreement on. All right, anybody else have comments or questions?
Michelle, I'm just asking a question because I feel like at our last meeting, that was Thursday, Chris said in two weeks, we would look at the enrollment of kids. And what it sounds like to me, it's about enrollment. Like, we all want to be back here. We want all the kids to be back here. Like Chris was saying about the kids at risk. We know those kids. We want nothing more than for them to be back in the building. But it comes down to numbers. So I think as soon as we know who's coming, then we'll know if we can go to green. So to me, like, won't we know that in two weeks?
Jeff, good? Yeah, just a couple of things. As far as the enrollment, like every time you walk by the office, there's a new student standing there wanting to come to Rangeley. I mean, daily we are getting numbers going up. About Paul, about like your question, I think the reason Jeff and I didn't supply three-foot numbers is because before March 2020, classes were set up three feet. I mean, if you go into a high school room, you can put 30 kids in them. You know, three feet is very close. So we didn't even supply the numbers because if we went two, three feet, the spaces hold a lot of kids, but it brings up a lot of issues. But, so that's why we didn't give the data for numbers on classrooms with three feet. We can go do that, but that's why.
To answer your question, Shelley, I recommended the two weeks because that's what the CDC and the DOE is basing their risk. The date, the date that the gentleman suggested.
Chris.
We can look at that as well, go back to the committee. We should know enrollment. We're going to make some contacts over the next couple of weeks to find out the families, what their definite plans are.
Paul, I had, just to clarify one of your questions. Did you want to know, is the administration willing to, let's say after we go to a hybrid one model, are you asking if they'd be willing to do a hybrid one and two model at the same time based on how many kids are in? Like one class would be in hybrid one and one would be in hybrid two? Is that what you were getting at?
I guess that's potentially one of the solutions, but it's really about the numbers. What percentage of kids are stopping us from going to a hybrid one? Now, all the kids are important, but if we can accommodate 75 to 80% of the kids, should we be staying in hybrid two because we can't accommodate 20% of the kids? And so then the other question is, if you're talking about a small percentage of kids, can we get more creative? If we only have to move around three classrooms for lunch, then that's different than having to move every classroom around for lunch. And I just, maybe that's not possible, but I just don't have that information. So it would be nice to know.
Anybody else have any comments?
Lindsay Savage. So I just wanted to clarify, I think, on two things that were brought up. One being, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we already proposed that the kids from Foster Tech would do remote the opposite day, right? And only in the hybrid one? So is that what you were saying is to do it, Chris, like in green or just in, hybrid one and hybrid one as well as hybrid two? Because you were saying that you felt that the Foster Tech kids should go remote opposite day, that they go to Foster Tech. So do you feel like that should be all the time or just in the hybrid two model?
I don't have enough data on it.
Okay.
Right now, we will be hoping two days. If they're in one of those cohorts, the other day is when they're not Foster Tech, not the one we're right now. That we move that faster.
Okay. Which I think is what was already, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something there because that was a concern that I had. Okay, no, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure. The second thing that I wanted to say about the state quarantining, that's been brought up a lot in our nurse meetings that we have been having. And I, you know, as a board, we can make that decision. I don't know that families will be totally honest about it, but I feel that we can only ask them to quarantine or do a test if they visit a state that doesn't have free. I just think it would get really muddy at that point if we just wanted to stick with the CDC guidelines and what. I just think it muddies the waters a little bit. That's just my opinion on that. And I, science is a weird thing, which we all know. And it's really hard to put a hard date on it. And I can understand why you guys want to do that. But my question, and this is where it's very hard for me, and as a board, I would love to hear your opinion on it, is at what point do we get to choose not to go by what the CDC and the DOE are telling us? I mean, for me medically, I mean, I am trying to go by the hard and fast, like what they're saying. Six feet masks, this is what you're going to have to do if you come to my office. You're going to have to go home if you have XYZ or this and, I mean, that's going to be hard on them. I get that. But at what point is it okay for us to just go and say, well, we're going to get all these kids in if it's only 20% that we're keeping them out? Like, I just need some clarification on at what point can we just choose to do what we want to do as a public school? So I'm not trying to, I just, I would like to know.
I don't, I don't think anybody was proposing doing something counter to CDC guidelines. I think Paul was saying, if it's only a small percentage that's keeping us from getting them all in the building, is there some other creative way to still follow CDC guidelines, but make it work to get them in the building? I don't, I don't think anybody would, we're not going to go against CDC guidelines, period.
I just want to make, I'm just clarifying. I don't know, and I know that a lot, sorry. I know that a lot. I don't know, and I know that a lot, I know that a lot of people think that we, because we don't have any cases, that we should be able to make this happen. Unfortunately, as much as we explain it, people just seem to still not understand that there's not cases that we potentially know of. But, so I, I am just in the medical piece of it, just trying to navigate it all. So I'm doing it myself. So that's why I just want some clarification.
Thank you.
No, that's fine. I, I think we've clarified that you're getting pushback from the public and other people saying, we got nothing here, why can't we just act normal? It's just, nobody here is proposing to do anything different than CDC guidelines. And you gotta, you've got an impossible task, Lindsay, to try to explain this to people of different backgrounds and ideologies and everything else. And the bottom line is the CDC, that is the Bible we're using right now. There's no way around it, we're a public institution and we can't do any different. Seth?
I just wanted to add something about our occupancy numbers. That number includes the teacher, but you often have classes. So like middle school science has 10, that's with the teacher, but there could be a class in there with one or two support staff. And so that would take the number of students down to seven. You know, so these numbers don't, everyone thinks like, look at it like, oh, we can put 14 students. No, one of those people's a teacher and then you could possibly have support staff in the room and that lowers your student numbers. So it's just something to consider to look at those. And I think Rowan has got somebody in the chat room. You want to do that now?
All right, we're going to try this. Joanna, if you guys would like to speak, I'm going to try and unmute you. All right, go ahead.
Hi, this is Joanna Farrar, mom to Max and Pipa and owner of Classic Provisions in downtown. I have several questions and I can be long-winded like Chris. If these are things that are going to be addressed, just let me know, that's fine. But I want to know what kind of support the school is going to be offering for full-time working parents who it is just not feasible to really upend our lives and our financial situations to homeschool our children.
Could you, I know I couldn't hear all that. Can you repeat it?
She would like to know if there's any support from the school to support families that are having issues with homeschooling and having their kids home during the week while they're working.
Thank you, Joanna. That's a good question. It's not a question that I can answer fully right now because we don't have numbers and don't have, you know, the data on how many families would be needing that support. But we are working with area centers to try to create some programming. We are putting a remote, a, a remote learning coordinator in place for the next few months to work with teachers and work with families to try to take a little pressure off. At this point, you know, that's all I can, I can, I can say to that. I do understand the challenges that some families are facing and it's not easy. This is not a perfect decision and it's not a perfect plan and it's not what teachers want. We want all of our kids back. And, you know, at this point, we just need to continue to work together as a community. This is not just a school issue, you guys. This is, this is a community issue. So we need to work together as a community to pull some resources together to make sure that the families have the supports in place that they need.
And what is the remote learning day going to look like? Because that's going to be a huge factor into us deciding whether or not we send our kids back, as I'm sure that it is for a lot of families. Are they dialing into the classroom at a certain time? When are we going to be able to see that? We can't make decisions until we see what their day is going to look like and what is going to be expected of parents to educate our children. I am a cook. I'm a chef by training. I, I mean, I'm not a kindergarten or a second grade teacher for very good reason. I don't feel comfortable or capable teaching my daughter how to read or anything like that. I, I just don't. I'm not equipped for that. I have not gone to school for that. I have no formal training for that. And unfortunately, it, the whole, this whole entire decision may boil down to me having to close my business in town so that my children are getting the attention and time and the things that they need.
So we do have a communication set to go upon approval of the plan that would go out this evening. And then over, starting tomorrow, I'm going to do videos for each grade span, going over the plan and in particular, talking about what remote learning will look like. Because that has been a big question because we threw it together really fast last year. We did our best, but it is going to look a lot different at all grades spans. So like I said, we have communications ready to go out and then I will do grade specific videos that will be out by Friday morning, we hope. Put them out through Facebook and email.
Do you have a general idea that kids are going to have to be dialed in at certain times during the day to the classroom or to their teacher?
I will, I will, you, you asking for that right now? Do you want me to go into that right now?
If you can just indicate one way or another, it would be helpful.
There will be, there's, there's going to be much more interaction with the teacher and the students. There will be times during the day when the teachers will be on to talk to students and there will be office hours and using the CISO.
Is this Seth talking?
This is.
Seth, so let me ask you this. With your children, you and Mrs. L, how are you going to manage? What kind of advice can you give parents right now? How are you going to manage your three children being home while still working full-time at the school? What is your approach to that? If you don't mind sharing?
We don't know. And I'm being honest, not sarcastic.
Doesn't it feel defeating?
And I've been living this since March and, you know, it's what I think about all day, every day, and it is difficult and I have no answer. Like we're stuck in it with you and returning to the decisions that's best for all students and the safety of the student, staff, community. And that is a difficult piece. We don't know what we're going to do yet because we're going to have three kids at home at every grade level in this school trying to learn. And one of them, Evan, is difficult. He doesn't do well remote. But I'm sorry, I don't have that. We haven't figured that out, Shelley and I haven't.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else on Zoom with questions?
Not at this moment. I'll let you know if that changes.
About in the room here. All right, I'm going to just real quick try to sum up what I'm seeing here and correct me if I'm wrong, which is very likely. Nobody is contesting starting in a hybrid two model. September 25th is what the administration is putting out for a reassessment. Chris put out a date of September 28th to go to hybrid one. Paul put out having a concrete date to go to hybrid one. And both of you said that is something to deviate, the deviation should be from the hybrid one model and explain why you would not be going to that as opposed to having to explain why you are staying in a hybrid two model. Essentially, the default is go to hybrid one on September 25th to 28th and have to explain if that's not the case. Is that accurate? The remote issue for foster tech, Chris, that seems like it was covered. Is that, are you satisfied with that? Okay, so for Zoom who's listening right now but can't hear because of the microphone, based on the data now, Chris is happy with that, but we'll have to further evaluate when we get more data points down the line, correct? I think the sports issue is a separate issue that's not part of this plan. Chris, you, are you saying you want it to be part of this plan?
I think conceptually, we have to look at any of the outside forces that could affect our core. So that's exposure through families traveling, exposure through intramural sports with other districts, and any other integration, whether it's festivals or the foster tech or those things that can expose the rest of the students, being that the primary goal is to get the most amount of students back into in classroom as soon as possible. That's my philosophy, philosophy.
My understanding is the MPA is in the process of reassessing as we speak. Is that correct?
The answer is yes. As a matter of fact, they met yesterday and they put the fall season further down the road. They had established a date where schedules could start. That has now been actually moved down towards, closer probably towards the end of September, which obviously is, you know, a point that they're concerned with. They have, the sports committees are meeting as well on an individual basis. So that when the fall would be football, soccer, field hockey, cross country and golf. So they are looking at that not as a blanket, but as a sports specific. But all, all MPA activities have been moved down. They have not been canceled at this point.
Brian, we had one other question.
Real quick. So Chris, as far as the sports go, would you be comfortable tackling that as a separate issue and not part of this reopening plan? It's, it sounds to me like it's, it is not an issue yet. They're kicking the can down the road. Okay, okay.
Bruce Trulyn in McGalloway would like to know if there's any update on the bus situation for when they return to school. He's in McGalloway and he cannot drive his stuff.
Jeff, Larry, and Shelley. We plan on picking up McGalloway. Right now, we can probably pick up all the students that, that need to be picked up by two buses. And McGalloway is one of them. Actually, the bulk of the kids in McGalloway need transportation. Looks like in town, one, one bus can get those kids because a lot of parents have expressed that they would drop their kids off. The PM looks like there's a few more kids that need rides home versus the A and R on the ride to school. But right now, McGalloway is, is being.
And even with the extras in the afternoon to go home because people are working, we still have bus capacity for everyone, correct? Okay, you don't have to come back. Okay, the bus capacity does not sound like a problem. The last thing, Chris, you brought up the quarantine for families who travel out of state. Are you recommending that we do something different than what Maine as a state has set where, you know, like Vermont, New Hampshire, New York, you don't need to quarantine? Or are you saying we just comply with what the state is putting out?
I say that we comply with, I think in all cases, we have to mirror what the CDC is doing. I think it's impossible for us to try to run a dual path. But that being said, I don't think it hurts to highlight in the plan those particular things. At least what I see with society is a lot of times everyone USA Today and reads the headlines, including memes and all that. Maybe we should do a meme of that. Maybe that would help.
So you'd like to see verbiage in the plan that just reinforces that the state's policy for quarantining or getting tested from certain states when you come back?
I would say that we can have a clear paragraph in there that says, we expect all parents with their travel to follow the same travel rules that are required there. For instance, I'm going to Chicago this week to drop off my daughter at college. When I get back to Portland, before I even come to this community, I'm going to wait and make sure I got a test that shows negative. If not, then I'm going to just quarantine my house and do that. But that's, that's how I believe it should be done, just to play it safe. Because the last thing I want to do is infect anybody in this community.
Okay, thanks. Did you have something? I'm sorry, Shelley, go ahead.
I just have a question.
Shelley.
Oh, closer?
Yeah.
Okay. So like in the two weeks, you said the two week part. And then, so by then we'll know all our enrollment numbers. And then, like Seth mentioned, there was a class that you could have seven or eight kids, but by two weeks we would know. And then we could possibly look at our number of kids and realize that, you know, I'm using these numbers of these grades not because I know, I'm just using them as examples. Like kindergarten might be heavy with kiddos, but first grade and second grade look small. Maybe combine, make different cohorts so that we could get more kids in the building, but they might be like a multi-age grouping, but that group of kids would stay together with their teacher?
You guys would know better.
Okay. Because to me, that would make sense, yeah. Okay.
It may seem like a very minor thing, like what's the difference between having a date where we decide to go from hybrid two to hybrid one with no specific date versus having a date? But there's a couple of things that it does. Sends a very positive message to the community that that's actually what we want to do. And if we don't do it, there's some good reasons why we're not doing it. On the other hand, if you don't have a date, people are going to rightly or wrongly say, you're just making excuses. You don't want to change what you're doing. I think we should be sending a positive message that we want this school open, the best thing for our kids, and frankly, our teachers too, is to get back into the classroom. And for all of the parents that need this school so that they can make a living. And whether or not we can do that, I have no idea. I'm not saying we have to do it. I'm just saying, let's be positive about it. Let's say we're going to do our damnedest by the end of September, have kids back here four days a week. And we're setting a date to do that. And the only thing that will change it are circumstances that force us to pull back. And we've seen places pull back. But we're a very different place than a lot of the places you see on the news. And I think we need to take some risks. Because if we don't, we don't know what the outcome could be. I mean, we need the kids to be back here. Just let me say, I appreciate all the work you guys are doing. I know it's hard and I'm not at all criticizing what you've done. What you've done is amazing. So thank you.
Thank you for that. We, we are actually, in our committee, I think I can speak for our committee, we're in the same place as you, believe it or not. We, we, this was our plan, was to continue to revisit and, and create creative ways in which we could get our kids back in the building. We just feel that for the first month, we just need to take it a little slow and we need to make some decisions moving forward. That's going to be what's best for our students and our staff. And we'll do our very best in creating some creative ways to get our kids back.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say one thing. I wasn't sure how clear it was. And if you're going to set a date, I think we need to be really mindful of what that date is because the state will reassess our green, yellow, red status on the 25th. So if you set that date to the 28th and parents are planning that, and then on the 25th, the state comes out and says, you're yellow. and then on the 25th, the state comes out and says, "You're yellow," that's going to throw a wrench in the works for a lot of parents.
That's a good point. I guess what I would say to that is that that could happen on any day. The state could come and say, you know, "I don't expect this to happen," but they could say, "You're red." And the next day, nobody's going to school. I do understand what you're saying, that if parents have a date that they're planning on and then on a Friday before the Monday that we're talking about, you change it up. It would seem prudent, though, to get that reassessment from the state before you would, it would be the last best information you have before you make a decision. Georgia and Seth, if you want to speak to, if you think that's too slow or too fast to turn around between a Friday to a Monday, please speak, speak up.
I mean, I think our plans that, it speaks to fluidity in that any changes that could come, our plans could change at any point in time. So I'm fine with whatever you guys decide for dates. If, you know, we get information on the 25th and then, you know, we're reassessing and we come back on the 28th with, you know, our recommendation at that point or, you know, our recommendation as to why we couldn't physically feasibly come back in a hybrid one model, I'm happy to work with you guys in whatever capacity you feel you want to do that. But you're right, it could change at any point in time.
The other benefit of having a date where you go to hybrid one is that you can plan for it. If you don't have a date, you're waiting for the state to tell you what to do. Do you actually have a plan in place? Maybe you do. But if you say, "So far, everything's been going great. We're waiting for the state," and the state says green or whatever they say, you have a plan and everybody is ready to go on a date. If you don't do, and if for some reason we can't do it, then very few people's lives change. You just say, "We're going to keep it the way it's been." And that will put some hardship on families who plan on going to hybrid one. But I just think we need to put some pressure on ourselves as a school to get ready to go to hybrid one. And if we have a date, we're going to be forced to do that.
Part of the planning process, the state, somewhere in one of the guidelines we saw was about transitions between plans. And as far as the school is concerned, a transition from like a hybrid two to a red would be quite easy. You just go to remote. You know, I think what we need to think about is if we go and we set this date is not to say, "Okay, on Friday, we were hybrid two. On Monday, the entire building is hybrid one." It might be good to consider like a week transition because what's going to happen is we're going to have our system down for half the students in this building. And all of a sudden, you might have twice as many elementary kids getting off the bus, getting dropped off. So it would be, be mindful of a transition into it. Even it doesn't have to be weeks of transition. It could be two days of transition. But maybe break the groups up like, "All right, on Monday, you know, K5's coming in." And then just to, because that is going to be a big one. When I think about this as a, you know, as an admin trying to help with logistics, we have more and more kids. All these things we're trying to get, to do are going to get really hard. And like, where do we need people? You know, those are the only things you can figure out when it's happening. So I think as we do this to, you know, not think of it as maybe a hard start to hybrid one, but maybe like a transition week or a couple of days. That's just my thought, thinking about it.
Anybody else? All right, I'm going to lay out what I'm hearing here and again, speak up if it's wrong. The opening plan as presented with the following changes. A date like you have in there already of September 25th, to make a determination based on the latest state information in order to go to hybrid one beginning on September 28th and lasting through that, the week of September 28th to fully transition to hybrid one. Is that enough time?
I don't know if I'm ready to fully answer that. I just, it's a thought that that would be a pretty abrupt change to go from hybrid two to hybrid one in one school.
Okay, we'll figure that out. And then the other change to the plan that was presented would be to have a paragraph in there to reinforce the quarantine rules the Maine CDC has set out for the state already. But we will reinforce it with a paragraph specifically in our reopening plan to have it in the forefront of people's minds if they do travel. So here's what I, we'll try this out. I would, do we have a motion to approve the 2020 to 2021 school year opening plan as presented with the following changes? On September 28th, we will begin a hybrid one transition, not to last longer than the week unless there is evidence to do otherwise. And we would add a specific paragraph sentence into the reopening plan that addresses the quarantine rules that the Maine CDC has laid out already, but we will put it in our own reopening plan. That may have sounded a little confusing, but anybody have a motion for what I just laid out there? Go ahead, Chris.
I would propose that we have a meeting on Thursday, September 24th, which would be the fourth Thursday of the month, a second meeting to the school board, at which time, unless otherwise provided information, the September 28th green or in hybrid one would begin. So on the 10th, additional information could be presented if we need to postpone it out. And then on the 24th, if staff provides additional information that suggests we need to go past the 28th or do whatever the transition piece would be for that week, that that could be voted on and accepted. So that way, we have a set date. We have two, what I call check dams on the 10th, additional information, additional facts, and then on the 24th. And then that way, the board can vote if we need to move it to October 5th for some reason or if there's no need to change, that we're ready to go. So there's two safety valves that you have, the 10th and the 24th. So I know it's extra time for everyone to come in, but I think it's important. We can limit the agenda like we did tonight to one item and cover it. That's my motion.
Chris, clarify, you want that added into this reopening plan? Those, those specific dates to meet? Okay. All right.
Can I talk?
That's Ginny on the mic. Go ahead, Ginny.
Okay. My concern is that there is going to be a lot of work just adjusting to the new system and then having to plan, adjusting to what we come back to, and then having to adjust to a new plan. And also consider we have to convince the board that we should not change to a different system on a specific date. If we do end up having a meeting, I would, in order to change teachers and staff requesting that we not change on that date, it's an added burden for them to do that preparation and that we as a board need to realize it's likely that we may need to accept the criteria that they have and listen carefully and not make it a time-consuming process to convince the board that we should not make that the change day.
I'm not positive, I understand, but I think what Chris proposed was that meeting on the 24th could be a board meeting with just one item on the agenda essentially to either move forward with throwing a hybrid one, which was the, is the go-ahead plan, or if it's not, that's the only thing we would cover there. Is that what you're saying, Ginny?
Yes, but I think we need to make it, realize it is going to be a really difficult process. Teachers and staff are going to be very busy for the next two to three weeks and preparing to come to the board and say, "We have to move forward or not move forward. You know, we have to not move forward at this point." It's an added burden for them. So we should be willing to listen very carefully to what they see are their needs.
Go ahead, Shelley.
I proposed a coming, coming week between the board meeting and going into phase one and supporting what Seth had said about a slow transition back in. The new approved calendar does have those two teacher workshop days that week. So you could have that slow phase in. Everybody comes in for those three days of that week. And there are already your teacher workshop days planned for the eighth and ninth, which would give the school time to say, "Wow, that worked great." Or, "We really need to adjust some things here with some procedures for making a hybrid one model work." But I feel like those dates there are kind of already built into the calendar.
Okay, so Robert's rules are not a strong point. As a matter of fact, I never heard the term Robert's rule till about a week ago. Kathy, my understanding is because you made the original motion, you now need to make another motion to agree to the amendments as we just presented them. Say it again. Okay, and who seconded that, the original motion? Karen? Okay, so we have a motion for Kathy to accept the friendly amendment. Karen seconded it. All in favor. And how about Ginny on Zoom?
No.
Ginny says no.
She said no?
No.
Okay, so we have, you have to count, Abby. Everybody in attendance here is a yes, is that correct? And then one no from Ginny. Okay, that motion passes. And just to be clear, the rest of the stuff we talked about here, the dates and all that, do we need to make another motion for this right now? We're all set. It's good, right? Okay. Anything else on that? Go ahead.
Brian, there's one question in the Zoom room that when this is all said and done, if you could just, this is what we've agreed on, this is the conditions, this is where we're going.
Just a quick question for me tomorrow. So the language of these amendments, is it okay if I do, like, do it in my, I can write this and then send it back out for everyone to look at? Or is it, is it in the minutes? Like, I know you voted on this. I don't want to just make something up that doesn't hit it exactly. I just can't.
So we'll go with what is in the minutes?
Okay.
Is that, are we good with the minutes? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. The last item on the agenda, oh, I'm sorry. Somebody wanted to know what we just agreed to. What we agreed to is the reopening plan as published. We have a change that we are going to meet on the 10th and the 24th is a board, the 10th will be a regular board meeting, the 24th where we will cover that. The 24th will be a special board meeting just to cover the checkpoints to make sure that we're on track to open hybrid one September 28th to start the hybrid one model. Sound good, everyone? Clear as mud? Okay. Okay, item five, need a motion to enter an executive session, labor contract negotiation, Title I MRSA, Section 405, Subsection 6D. Chris, second? Okay, thank you. We will suspend the meeting at, at some 7:14, enter an executive session.
I'm going to the executive board meeting. Whoop, I'm on TV. Shut me off. Kim or Seth there?
She's just going to have to. Ginny, we're trying to figure out how to get you into that board meeting. Hold on one second.
Okay, that's what I wondered. I'm fine, I'll wait.
We need to call in, maybe call Chris on his phone.
Can we, can we mute everybody? Nope.
Nope. We've got to, Ginny, we've got to get you on a separate, either a separate Zoom meeting or on a phone with someone who's in there.
Okay.
Think of phone, anybody's phone number that's in there, that might be easiest.
Okay, so I call them, but I'm going to still be on the computer.
So mute your mic to your computer so that you're not talking.
But I'm, I'm calling somebody who has a phone in there. And I think I, I have, I have Chris's number, yeah?
Call him.
Okay, thank you.
We're just going to go tell them. So make sure you mute your mic here.
Yep.
Okay, and we are coming back.
Okay, reconvene at 7:31. Do I have a motion to approve the labor contract negotiation that we just spoke about in executive session? I'll do Kathy and Karen second. All in favor? And is Ginny on Zoom right now?
Sorry, Ginny's got her hand up.
Okay, so it is approved. All right, hey, thanks, everybody, for all the work that went into this meeting specifically. It's appreciated and hopefully we'll be on the down slope here and things will go smoothly. I get a motion to adjourn? Chris, second? Jessica, all in favor? unanimous? Good night, everyone.
So Abby, if I just hit.